I gotta run, I'll get my glasses. I gotta read stuff.
No work.
Good plan.
At this time, as Acting Mayor, I'll call the order of the City Council meeting September 1st, 2022 at approximately 6:34 in the evening. Kim, would you take roll call, please?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Hatton?
Here.
Acting Mayor Bishop?
Here. At this time, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item of business is that we adopt the agenda. I make a motion to adopt the agendas, or second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to the public comment section, and I believe that...
Excuse me, Mr. Acting Mayor, the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay, excuse me. The consent agenda has two items. A is approved monthly claims, and B is June 30th, 2022, City Council meeting minutes. Is there a... Is there a motion to approve those, the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we get to the public comments. And... There seems to be... Some concern on the part of... People that own First Choice Builders, and I assume that's you, isn't that Chris?
Yep.
Okay. And... And it's my understanding from Kim that you're here tonight without going through the process of amending the conditional use permit that was approved sometime during 2022, I believe. But to get feedback from the City Council to determine perhaps where the City Council stands on... Granting you a amendment to your conditional use permit. Does that pretty much express?
Yeah, I would, yeah, generally, specifically one part.
Well...
Yeah, go up to that.
Why don't you go up there, just sign in and state your name and address, and then go from there.
I'll just remind all of the council, the consent plan review is typically used prior to applications coming into the city. No action is taken, and it generally is just to give feedback to a potential applicant. Prior to them having to go through the application process and getting all the necessary documentation, the site plan and labels for the public hearing notices. It kind of cuts down on their cost if they get some feedback first.
Okay. Okay. Sir, why don't you go ahead and state in perhaps more concise method of what exactly it is that you're here for today?
Listening to Kim describe that, it kind of dawned on me. I came in in February and kind of discussed the CUP in purchasing 157 St. Croix Trail, the former Shiners. We applied for the CUP with all the documents and came into March. My timeframe was fairly quick to move into the building, so we wanted to get that through. At that meeting. You know, we went through the CUP, you guys approved it. Discussion on the access to Second Street was brought up, but it was on the site plan. And again, detailing that, I guess I'm here to try to understand, you know, A, why we can't use that access, or B, what we need to do to use that access. In order to, you know, again, I think I sent an email to the council members, just looking online, just asking, you know, or stating that I really feel it's vital to kind of how we operate. The boulders in front of it being blocked has been brought up. You know, I understand if it's a bar, you know, a bar where people are leaving at late hours, I could understand that that's better for the community. We're a totally different business. That, I guess I just need help understanding, you know, kind of the reason why, you know, I'm not able to use the access that's there, so.
And, you know, what it would take?
Anybody?
Acting Mayor, councilmembers, I do just want to add, I distributed copies of the site plan that was submitted with that CUP application. Just because the boulders are there, that does not mean he was asking for access. That does not, what's on the site plan does not constitute an access. There was no driveway dimensions, there was no detail in terms of materials, what kind of driveway it would be, what it was made out of. I do believe it's a commercially zoned site, which I believe it's, going from memory, 65% is max impervious surface. And I recall with the CUP discussion, Councilmember Schroeder said he would be very concerned about, want those numbers in terms of the impervious surface.
I mean, it was my understanding that, at least with my memory, that... When you... When you were before us for the conditional use permit, you indicated that it's two lots there, and there's a possibility of severing, severing those two lots. That was part of the discussion, and...
For the CUP, I'm sorry, for the CUP or before the CUP, like when I came in in February?
It would be my belief that it was during the request for the CUP, the day that we either granted it. As I understand it, it was made... Very clear that... That there was only one access road into those two lots, and that is the one you're using off of Stagecoach. And that if anything was to change, specifically, I guess, most of us were maybe thinking, or at least speaking for myself, that if it was going to change, it would probably be upon use, maybe severing the two lots that you have there and selling that more northern, northern lot as a separate piece of property to whatever type of business or whoever wanted to purchase it. And it's my understanding that at the CUP hearing in March, I guess if that's your memory of it, that it was made clear that the egress on the Second Street North, if there ever was one, which I'm, you know, nobody's shown me yet that there was, that either way, that it cannot be allowed. At least while the... Two lots were being used by your company, okay? And whether or not it could change in the future, if you ever sever that lot and sell it to somebody else, that's maybe a different story. I'm not giving you any hope there, I'm just saying that, you know, it changes considerations considerably. But that's my memory of it, and I do know for a fact that it was made clear that the only access would be from Stagecoach, and...
St. Croix Trail.
Yeah, St. Croix Trail, excuse me, and...
That'd be a long drive.
Yeah. So, that's how I remember it. I, when I drive by there, since I have to drive by every day in order to get to my house on Second Street North, there are three stumps there that have been cut down, not by you, but, you know, by somebody, okay? That I doubt people were driving over, okay, although you probably could in a truck. And then there was the one where the rocks are, which somebody might interpret as access to that northern lot. And as far as I know, at least on the eight years that I've been around on the City Council, you know, whenever the flood run was being based out of Shiner's Bar and Restaurant, they came to us and asked for permission to move those, move a rock so that the motorcycles could enter on St. Croix Trail and exit on Second Street North. And for that 24-hour period of whatever the flood run, the length of time it runs, we granted that. But that's the only time that I've known of that anybody ever used that with the city's permission, okay?
Yeah, so I was, I was roting zoning for a guy for 12 years before John, or John took over after me, so I, I think I go back to like 2002. And that property was a lot, a lot, it had a fence, it had the trees around it, and that's where the trees got cut. And just because somebody takes and cuts the trees and puts gravel down and you get a picture of it, doesn't mean it's an access. It's never had an access. It was, they used it for a flood run. Prior owners put gravel down, thought they could make it an access, it got shut down. That's why we got the boulders and so on. Even, even you go on Division Street, we had an issue a year, this is even before I, right when I built my house, there was a berm between the north and south end of Division. And somebody had a guy come in and dig the berm out and put gravel down, well, that, there was no access, you know? So they put the berm back. Just because somebody goes in and clears a path, puts something down, doesn't make it or create an access. When they redig County Road 18, we fought trying to get a driveway on County Road 18, and they wouldn't give us access.
Is that St. Croix Trail?
Yeah, yeah.
For that property?
Right. And so, being that said, and that's, you know, and that's, and even, even at the primary election, I went to vote, and, you know, all three election judges confronted me about what's going on and how come the boulder was moved, how come they're driving on there, they shouldn't have access? It's not an access, and so the residents feel very strong about that, so. And I made my, and I made my point clear when you came in to purchase the property that we won't have access to that, grant access, because there is no access on that property from Second Street North.
Councilmembers, my name is John Markert, I'm counsel for First Choice Builders. Councilman Schroeder, you bring up a good point. That property is a separate property. It's two parcels that are now owned by First Choice.
Well, technically 157 property.
Exactly, 157 Properties LLC. That, the CUP, the way it's written right now, describes a condition that the property can't be sold. So...
Can't, excuse me?
That it cannot, that northern parcel cannot be sold without permission from the City Council. That's a condition.
Without amending the CUP?
Acting Mayor and councilmembers, there is a condition, which is very typical, that if parcel one and parcel two, they must be considered collectively for this CUP. That's what the CUP was applied for, was the two properties. And the condition just says that if one of the parcels is sold, they have to come in for an amended CUP.
Right. So technically, the north parcel does not have access to a roadway.
What?
The north parcel does not have access to a roadway.
How is that? There's an easement for all three parcels.
There's an easement that serves the parcel to the east and to the parcel to the south. It doesn't serve the north parcel.
There's an easement between the three lots?
Correct.
But not the north one?
Correct. It's not in the property records for the...
But how do people get there? Without access from Second Street?
They used to have access from...
There was no access.
St. Croix Trail, which was removed when the highway was redone. So at this point...
There was no access from St. Croix Trail to that property directly.
Okay.
There always was an easement where it is now. There never was access to that property from St. Croix Trail, Highway 95, or whatever you want to call it.
Okay. Well, the property records for the north parcel don't show that easement as being benefiting that property. So the question we have is, is there an application process for 157 to apply to the city to get access for, from that lot onto Second Street?
So, let me ask you this, since you have the legal knowledge here. You mean First Choice, or whoever owns it, can't grant an easement to use the same driveway they use?
It could.
It could.
Conceivably, yes.
Is there a conflict?
There's no conflict at all. What I'm saying is that each parcel, under state law, is entitled to reasonable access to a roadway. It's not required that the property owner, even though it's mutually owned, use an easement for that particular property. So all we're asking, is there a process through the city for which we can apply for access from that lot onto Second Street? Because I looked through the code, and I don't see that there is a process that's outlined in the city code.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that has been explained to Mr. Cos over and over, it's an amended CUP. That is the process. I will also note that you have your own legal counsel that put out a memo regarding the unconditional right of access, and basically, he indicated that the city can eliminate or not allow that access. It's conditions of approval for a conditional use permit, and the city can put in any reasonable conditions.
Can I ask a question? Do you have a certificate of occupancy right now? Is the building finished?
Yep, Isaac finished it off. About a week or so ago.
Got a notice of that?
Nope.
And so what, so that empty lot in your CUP, what is that designated for, just overflow parking, correct?
On the site plan, I showed an area for future fenced-in storage, and...
So when I drive by it, so if it's finished, and I drive by it every day, and you moved in, what, end of February, March, correct?
Beginning of March, yeah.
Yeah.
And started to...
And so we got, you know, road restrictions through the middle of May, end of May, and now I drive by and I see piles of concrete sitting there, sand, brush, trailers, building materials, so is that in violation of your CUP or not?
It's, that's there, it's in the process of getting moved, we've had a very...
You know, I, I mean, and I know, and I'm in the trade, so I know what it's like, but, you know, so I look at, at... How would I say it? You know, it's been May, restrictions been off, it's, we got June, July, August, we start September, so we're gonna see that. And that was, all three, all three of those judges brought that up to me.
It's...
And they say it's an eyesore, and, and you, you probably remember, we could go back on record, when I said that, I don't want to see crap because we're dealing with it on the other property.
I, I don't want to see that either, I actually, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a crazy summer.
Yeah, I know.
And it's, it will be gone by, well before winter. And again, I hate looking at it myself, because I want to have a nice looking spot.
And just so you know, I happened to be driving home one day, and I didn't complain because I thought, well, I'm not gonna complain because I know people are gonna complain about that boulder being moved. And somebody in a dark pickup with a topper, and I don't know, there's a couple of them.
That's probably me.
And got in their pickup purposely, went north where the boulder was, went on Second Street, turned and went north. And I'm like, so they could have went out the other access, but they purposely went through where the boulder was. And, you know, that's why we're getting these complaints, you know? And the other issue is... You know, what happens when we have road restrictions on and heavy equipment? You know? Stuff, you know, people go in and out of there. So, but...
During the, I guess, I'm, help, help me kind of understand, I mean, I, you know, I came in before, it's, and I understand that everybody else has to do roundabouts and that kind of stuff. I mean, to me, it was perceived that that was a potential access in purchasing the property, we talked about it, I understood.
But you got your, you know, we told you it wasn't gonna be an access.
Yep. So, I mean, it's, I would have, it was on the CUP, you know, to show that it was there, so I guess the question is, you know, can it be re-reviewed without a new CUP? Everybody, we're talking about it as, if it's a blocked access. So to me, that kind of indicates, and I don't know, if it's verbiage, that it is an access, or it has been an access. So I perceived it as an access, and that's why I put it as existing lot access on the site plan with no curb cut detailed. Because that's, my understanding of doing that was indicating the use. And we did discuss it, but then there was no mention of, again, other than the discussion of not using it, and that's what went to the county. So I guess my question is, what's stopping, is it, you know, councilmembers, for reasonable access through that as a business that's purchased the property that, approaching daily multiple times a day from the north, and exiting in the need to go south multiple times a day for that convenience? I guess the complaints, and I totally understand, and if you guys want to give me a time limit, it will be done on getting everything out of the parking lot, such as the gravel and sand, that process is already in place.
I mean, I hate to say it, we fought this battle years ago when they put those stupid roundabouts in.
Yeah.
About closing access off and having to go north to go south, and, you know, I guess right now...
But there's only a certain number of properties that are on a corner lot that have access to a public street. So I guess, I guess if I can, you know, what are, what's stopping the city? Is it, you know, the person across the street who came out and yelled at my wife when she was cutting the grass about the access? Is that the person who, again, that I've heard from other people have complained about other things? You know, he lives in a, if he was so concerned about the business, there was...
We're not here about him.
Okay.
Acting Mayor, councilmembers, I, I would like to get back on task. The applicant has been advised how to move forward with allowing that access, it's an amended CUP. I will remind everyone, conditional use permits run with the land. If there are any changes to them, you have to amend the CUP.
Right. And the CUPs that have been recorded for the existing north lot don't mention anything about an access either being there or not being there, or one being blocked? So that's why we were coming to the council to say, what were the reasons why it got blocked?
There was never an access.
There was never an access.
The boulders got put there because the tenants...
We're using it, we're using it.
Using it as an access, and there never was an access.
Okay. And so the, what council's telling us is we need to do an amended CUP to make a request for access onto Second Street. Is that accurate?
With the plans, the detailed plans in terms of driveway dimensions, the material that would be used, you need to demonstrate that it doesn't go over the 65% impervious surface. And again, I would ask for some feedback before you go through that process.
Exactly. And so the question we would have is, is there, where the existing location is, is that objectionable? And should Mr. Cos be looking at a different area along Second Street that would be more amenable to the City Council? If we're going to go through the effort of doing an amended CUP?
Well, as a physical location, I don't see a big problem with that one, because basically going in and out of that parking lot, you might be pointed at somebody's garage door with headlights, but that's kind of it. You're not gonna be directed, pointed at a house.
You do miss the garage.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's offset reasonably, but I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt. Oh, that's right, that was when the bar was there, they had trouble driving straight, but no. But no, it's, and I think you and I talked about that fact, that that driveway does not directly shine on anybody's house. So from that perspective, I think that's a fine location, but that's just my two cents. If we're going that way.
I will just note to the applicant as well, a potential applicant applying for amended CUP, you know what the process is for the regular CUP?
I have most of it with me now.
The site plan would not be too much to update with that information, but it does require another public hearing, and all the neighbors do have to be notified, and I will... You had nobody here at the last one, which was really nice for you, I would expect a houseful.
One thing that came up during that CUP discussion, why, that, Kim, you suggested to the council members was voting a time access, or like...
Time restriction?
Time restrictions of using that, and I don't know why it didn't go that way again. I was hesitant to put, you know, to question because I was in the property and I did need the CUP at that time. And I didn't want to, because I think we said at one point, well, we can table this and come back, and I wanted to make sure we had...
No, we never...
No.
I wouldn't have tabled something like that.
Well, I felt like we should just get this CUP, and if I needed to address the driveway to do it again, which sounds like is an amended CUP. Because I was, I thought, I, again, my intent was, you know, saying that I wanted that, and I was surprised that we didn't get there, so. Is there any, I mean, if we go through this process, does it come down to a vote? I guess that's my question, like...
Yeah.
And that's, that's, there's, it's just a vote, yea or nay? Because it sounds like there's a lot of nays.
You're getting a good feeling.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a good feeling, but you're getting a feeling, okay? And... They say, I'm not gonna promise anything for the future, but, you know, if you were, had sold this and were coming to us, I think that, you know, we would be in a position where we have to probably figure out what we're gonna do, okay? Whereas the way it is right now, I don't see, you know, much chance of it actually going through, okay, with an amended CUP.
If I would have, did you say?
What's that?
Counsel, what did you say, if I would have?
Was, to sell the property.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not guaranteeing, that would be the solution either, I mean, you know, I mean, the person that's buying the property, buyer beware, has to understand, you know, he's got to figure out how he's gonna get out of there, okay? What kind of property it's gonna be, I don't, I don't know, who, what type of person would buy that particular piece of property? I'm just saying that considering the way I remember our discussions, at the time you were in for this conditional use permit, in my mind, it was very clear that the only exit and entrance to that property was from St. Croix Trail.
I don't believe you were here in the March meeting, I think it was just Tim, Tom, and Tim for that. Because I did review the video, just trying to look at that, just to make sure, understand and be prepared. I, yeah, is there, are there city ordinances that would stop me, or is it truly a vote by the four of you? I guess, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to...
That's why we volunteered to do this glorious job. That's why we volunteered to do this glorious job.
Yeah. Well, and again, I asked John to help me because I just, I don't know if the, you know, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to, you know, fight about it. I just, you know, want help understanding on if there's a reasonable reason why, you know, my employees and only my employees, you know, to use that. I know there was discussion, part of that discussion is anybody could pull in there and drive, drive around. I mean, we can put signage, first choice employees only, you know, I'm not gonna, Barnes is not gonna be able to, I'm not gonna grant them access to cross my property to use that with semi trucks. I mean, that, that will not happen and that could definitely be a condition if that's what it is, is a, for the conditional use permit. I guess I just, you know, help me understand how I can, or help me understand why it's such a bad thing for me to go in and out of that act, you know, of that, onto Second Street for how I'm gonna use it.
Apply, apply and then you'll find out with the, with the residents coming in here.
So I mean, that, it's up, you guys will follow their lead. Is that the idea?
Well, we all have our own, I, personal idea, but yeah, I mean, you know, I, like I said, I've been involved in our city council for, you know, city government for twenty years and that, that's been a hot, hot, hot topic.
Can I, can I ask each of you the, you know, what's the one biggest thing that, um, you would like me to address in order to get, or why that wouldn't be reasonable to have access? Like what's the one thing that's stopping it? So I at least have a direction to go?
I guess the way I feel is it's not necessary, okay? You know, uh, you've got a way to get in and out of your properties if you wanna be generous to the person you sell it to. I certainly would grant them the ability to use the driveway they currently use. And that way we don't have to, uh, deal with, uh, community reaction to something that I know is not gonna be favorable, okay?
Well, if you do sell, do you have enough parking access for the current building and property for the employees and staff and all that, customers?
I'd have to look at the, um, regulations in our occupancy load.
And, and I'll also note in that case, Dan has every right to sell, but again, um, an amended CUP would have to come through with just that property that you intended on, on still utilizing.
So I did.
And that process, part of that process would be ensuring that there's enough parking and stalls and the ADA compliance stall and storage area.
So I did notice you put a new sign up and on your CUP, it says no sign has been reviewed or approved. As part of this CUP, all signage must comply.
I believe I discussed that with Kim and just switched.
Did you pull permit for that?
We didn't erect a sign. We changed the lettering on it. I would assume, I mean, there was no change to the sign itself.
Yeah, let, let, you know, and Tim, you know.
I'm just asking.
No, I know. And, you know, let's, you know, we need to get on with the rest of our city business. I wish I could be more favorable in saying, you know, apply and, you know, it's gonna happen. You know, my feeling is if you apply for amended CUP, that conceivably, you know, it's not gonna be successful, okay? That's just my gut feeling, okay?
We appreciate the, uh, feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good rest, Louie.
Yep. Thank you. Tim, I just didn't wanna get into.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
No worries.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, let's see, uh, we're to subsection five, unfinished and new business. A is, oh, five is consideration of trail maintenance agreement. Has everybody had a chance to peruse that?
Well, Acting Mayor and Council Members, I'll just note that, um, this was from, like, two thousand, it's from like three years ago. Um, and so when the county approached, uh, me on getting this approved, I was like, well, okay, but why wasn't it approved back then? What's going on? And she did send me an email that kind of explained that, that they were waiting to include different, uh, items, benches, a shelter. Um, so the county just held on to the maintenance agreements until those could be included. Um, then I will also note that all the cities, um, that are involved have to approve this. And I did notice on other cities' agendas, it was just in a consent agenda item. But I wanted to put it on the agenda in case you had any questions.
And in reading it, you know, they talk about snow plowing and maintenance and that type of stuff. I've never felt that we have any, I mean, on occasion, I've heard somebody complain, you know, that the branches may be sticking out over the trail a little bit and would somebody please cut them back? And I certainly wouldn't mind doing that, you know, just as a volunteer thing. But, um, we're not under any obligation to keep it snow plowed or.
I thought we couldn't for the snowmobiles.
They groom it. And the only thing is we try to make sure that, uh, crosswalks are opened up so the kids don't have to crawl over the snowbank and the tennis court.
So all we're doing is, uh, is hopefully, um, consenting to something that has basically been in existence for three years without, without a document.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion, uh, about this? Oh, I move that we, uh, sign this cooperative agreement between the State of Lakeland Shores and Washington County for maintenance of Efton Lakeland St. Croix Trail, dealing, I'm assuming with only that portion that's within Lakeland Shores. So I'm bringing up that motion to approve it. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second thing is the consideration of the recycling agreement contract.
Got one minute?
Um, conversations with Kim, but basically, uh, we have an option. We can get, we can, I don't wanna say renew, but redo a five-year contract with price changing every year, which will be in the contract. It will be, and I think it's a, I can't remember. I think it's a three or five percent maximum increase between the years. Uh, or go with a single-year contract that we do five times over the five-year period. I'm all pulling for A. It's what we had. Uh, as Kim and I have discussed, it's probably one of the, it's been a really great contract and the out, the service has been outstanding. Any problems we've had, I've been able to get ahold of Bobby at Highland and, and talk to him about it and discuss the, the contract as to, at one point, when we had a, a tool salesman in our neighborhood, he's since retired, but, uh, maybe once every two months, his, uh, cardboard content was exceptionally high. He'd get some shipping deliveries and he would have liked a second bucket. And I talked to Bobby and we went back and forth on it a little bit and, and I, I said, well, Bobby, worst-case scenario is they just stack it up there and your guy's gotta get out of the truck and, and go pick it up. I mean, and so you can either give him another bucket or get out of the truck in February. Then the guy retired. So it was kind of a mute point at that point, but.
But basically what you're saying, Tom, is that it's been somewhat flawless.
Yeah, they've done a really good job and, uh, I would, I would predict, I don't know, but I would predict that the numbers go up, but I would say that when we did that last contract, recycling money was very, very low. Aluminum cans were like twenty-one cents a pound and now they're close to fifty. I mean, it's, so there's, there's more money on the back end for him and he distributes some of that cost or that reduction in cost across the. So I guess I'm just looking for, uh, at this point.
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. I mean, we don't need a motion. I'm just gonna do what you guys.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Um, I was just gonna say that also not only, um, would I recommend that because of the costs and the drivers, I mean, there's other companies that are not having pickup right now.
Oh, yeah. There's, I've seen that, yeah.
Yeah. You don't know how this is gonna go.
It's been, it's, I can't, I have no complaints with their service.
But is the, is, it, the contract's gonna be basically the same, except it's going to be updated for five years with the price increases.
Price increases, that's probably the primary change that we're gonna see.
Therefore, you could do a motion now to go with the five-year and then when the contract is finalized, it would just be on the consent agenda.
Okay. And that's fine. If you wanna go ahead, Tim, that's fine.
I make a motion for a five-year.
Renewal?
Renewal.
I'll second it. All in favor?
I, I like five-year spans between.
Um, next is the consideration of resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-oh-seven, the two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget. I assume that everybody, since we've had this for at least a week on our computers, that everybody has, you know, spent a great deal of time studying it. Um, and, um, is there any discussion concerning, uh, the budget, uh, as was presented by our treasurer and what you've looked at and digested?
I, I don't have anything, John.
I don't have anything either.
No, I don't have anything.
Acting Mayor and Council Members, I would just like to note for some of your residents that perhaps are going to tune in later, that a budget work session was held prior to this meeting. Um, the treasurer was here and presented the numbers and basically the, the increases is just due to inflation with some of your, your other contractors.
Thanks, Kim.
And, uh, the, uh, budget, uh, resolution, uh, talks, uh, for two thousand twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is an amount that cannot be exceeded in December when we come to a final figure, but it can be lowered and it is slightly higher than last year's, uh, but not significantly, at least in my mind. So with that information, are you gonna take a roll call or do you want us to just vote on it?
No, we just need a motion, a second and a vote.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
Okay. I'll second it. That'd be resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-oh-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moving on, we have the consideration of resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-oh-oh-eight. Did you mean to have that extra O in there?
Oh, gone to the double-oh-eight status.
The two thousand twenty-three preliminary levy. Uh, and as I understand it, it's in the amount of, um, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Is there any discussion concerning this, uh, resolution? Uh, without any further discussion, I would move that we, uh, pass the resolution establishing the preliminary levy certification for the city's general fund at a hundred and seventy-nine, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. All, all those, oh, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kim, does that pretty much take care of everything other than, uh, everybody's individual reports?
Yes, it does.
To Kim, do you have anything you'd like to add to the city up to?
Um, I guess I will just let all of you know, of course, filing was taken care of. Filing is done. Filing is over. There were two council seats open and the mayor, and we have three, uh, people that have filed for those positions. Um, we, really the only reason I'm bringing this up is because we have to keep in mind in November, we're gonna have to do a certification of election results and that has to be done seven to ten days after the election. And your meeting falls at the first of November, so we've always had to reschedule. I only do need three people to attend that. Um, but that will be coming.
And the mayor and council reports, uh, Mr. Tim Schroeder, do you have anything?
Uh, I have nothing.
Mr. Tom Wilson?
I, recycling emptied my barrel, so.
Tim Hutton?
Um, Relief Association, which I mentioned earlier, have they contacted the city about coming in for the presentation?
No.
What do you actually mean by the Relief Association?
The fire department.
Fire Department Relief Association. I think they're getting, they're asking for an increase.
Um, do they do that every?
Yeah, they do that. Yeah, they.
Yeah, I think, and I think they've also updated some of the, uh.
The bylaws or?
The bylaws and whatnot, so that's all.
I believe we, we've already approved that. That was at the last meeting?
Yeah, that was at the last.
Yeah.
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 That's right.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I, if they're upgrading the, the monthly amount, they usually bring it to the city. And that might happen, I, from the Relief Association. Kevin Johnson usually comes in and, the big guy.
I was gonna ask, that's the guy who likes to talk.
He usually comes in.
Well, then we're gonna say no.
Oh, we are.
No. Haven't you done that in a, like a work session before that wasn't at a regular?
No, it, they generally come in and give you a, a five-minute blurb and say, and then, you know, and then we approve it, is what it boils down to, because each city has to improve that increase.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, that's kinda what we did, but, yeah, we would work on it at the fire department, get it all sorted out and then Kevin would come in. And a lot of times I just did it anyway because I didn't, I told Kevin to stay home because I was the finance chair. It was pretty easy for me to carry that bucket of water.
Okay, uh, I guess one of the things that, uh, we didn't really make a decision on is, uh, and I don't know whether it's too late at this point in the meeting or not, but, uh, I did have that quote from John Perotti as to the seventy-five hundred dollars and it could be as much as two thousand more if they have to do it during the winter. And this is a, as he, as he talks about it, uh, is a survey of those Quinlan and south end of Lakeland Shores Road. And it basically sets us up for allowing us to have these two sections of road go out for bid in two thousand twenty-three or any year after it's actually done.
Yeah, it's set and then we can just roll it out.
Right, right. Yeah, when we, when we want, you know? So I guess, uh.
Is it, this basically like an evaluation of the surface?
No, I don't think so.
Are they looking for a legal survey so they can map all like, let's just say, square footage of what's, of what's?
Okay, okay.
And he's putting specs together, so it's just something if he'll have on file and if we decide to have it, put it out for bid next year, we can.
If it's got extra money, um, you know, we might as well start spending it, uh, so we're not. Trying to figure, trying to figure, trying to figure out what to do with it in, uh, January of, uh, you know, two thousand twenty-four.
I mean, if we can get it done, you know, yet this year, I mean, that, I'm fine with that.
And I guess my only thing is to have, tell Mr. Perotti that, I mean, if they can't get it done before snow, then, you know, why not just wait until the snow's, the snow's gone rather than?
But don't worry then when they do in the spring, the price will have gone up anyway, so.
Yeah, I suppose so. But anyway, I would just run that by him. So do we have to do anything with that or not?
Uh, Acting Mayor and Council Members, I'm not clear what, what you're asking for. So is it just for the city engineer to go survey those areas?
Yeah, he won't be doing it.
At a cost.
At a cost.
Okay, but that's seventy-five hundred dollars is in your budget?
Yeah.
Okay, and the, just having him serve the consent to go do that work and does not approve the project?
No, I mean, there are, there are.
It would be going out for bid and.
It just deals with those two streets, Quinlan.
Oh, okay.
Putting it together.
Yeah, then we don't need a motion. We just would need the consent of the council to get, to direct the city engineer to do that work.
Okay, and is.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with it.
And, uh, Tim Hutton, I, you know, I, I noticed that there's a five-city meeting on the twenty-first of September and I'm just curious, when I saw what the possible agenda stuff was, it was like, uh, oh, like a community room or something like that and, uh, you know, I mean, there was something else with the community room. I can't remember. And there were two other things that went along with it that didn't. And I was just curious as to whether you, whether, first of all, whether you were gonna attend that meeting, you know, if you could. And, uh, secondly, whether you had any idea of what they were really gonna discuss or whether there's anything we want from this city, you know, that we want them to discuss.
I will be at the meeting. I, I don't know what, you're, you're saying, okay, so they had the Flock security system status. I think that's what Saint Mary's point was, kinda get that together and they kinda wanted to see if we would all go in on it. Um, trail maintenance, I guess. Crosswalk, bike alert, intersections, but the, yeah, I don't know anything about the.
Oh, they just sent out something the last two days.
Yeah.
For yes, for today or yesterday.
Yeah, I think it's today. Yeah, I think it was today.
Yes, they did.
And that, well, and then the curling center or community center, I don't, I, that's the first I heard of it when I got the email.
Okay. And, um, I, you know, things have been running smoothly, so, you know, I haven't had too much input from anybody and, uh, basically none, you know, except for maybe one person. And so, um, let's hope they continue to do so. And, um, with that in mind, if nobody's got anything else to add, uh, I think it, uh, Tim?
I just have one thing, I just want to mention that we suffered a great loss last month with, uh, the city clerk from.
Oh, yeah.
Kate, Kate.
Piscatello?
Piscatello. So she'll be dearly missed. She was a saint.
She was a big driving force on the recycle days.
Yeah.
And our cleanup day.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And, and I always, I don't know if anybody else did on the council, always got a note from her afterwards, which, you know.
We got one from Seattle.
Yeah, got it from Seattle.
So, um, yeah. She will be missed, it'll be interesting to see how they replace her, not that she can be replaced, but.
So our thoughts are, are with Ralph.
She was, I did the recording for the fire board now too, so she's, she was a busy lady and she will be missed.
Yep.
So that's all I have.
With that somber note, uh, let's, uh, adjourn this meeting at, uh, seven twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim, did you talk to Johnny?